Good evening to all that are here. It is April 6, 2021. Before we open our meeting, would you please join us in prayer offered by Councilmember Bolden?
Thank you, Mayor. Let's bow for a moment of prayer. Heavenly Father, we thank you for this privilege of prayer. We thank you for the gift of another day. We thank you for the blessings of your grace and your mercies. Father, we ask that you bless this meeting. We ask that you bless all that gathered here today as we come together to do your will, to provide the best resources for this city and its citizens. We ask that you provide us with the knowledge and ability to make good, sound decisions without fear of favor. Pleading our hearts to die to make a difference in our communities, in our cities, state, and country. We ask that what we do in this meeting be pleasing to you, and we ask this in your name. Amen.
Thank you. So I'll now open our council meeting for April the 6th, 2021, and call that meeting to order. Would you please join me in reciting the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for We have two presentations this evening, and they are in the form of proclamations. So one is for Fair Housing Month, and it reads, "Whereas Title 8 of the Civil Rights Act of 1968, as amended, prohibits housing discrimination and declares it a national policy to provide, within constitutional limits, fair housing in the United States; and whereas the principle of fair housing is not only national law and national policy, but a fundamental human concept and entitlement for all Americans; and whereas during the month of April, the national fair housing law provides an opportunity for all Americans to recognize that complete success in the goal of equal housing opportunity can only be accomplished with the help and cooperation of all Americans. Now therefore be it proclaimed that I Shelley Brophy, as Mayor of the City of Nacogdoches, and on behalf of the City Council, do hereby declare April 2021 as Fair Housing Month in Nacogdoches, Texas, and urge all citizens to become aware of and support the fair housing law." Our second proclamation is for the Mayor's Monarch Pledge. Whereas the monarch butterfly is an iconic North American species whose multi-generational migration and metamorphosis from caterpillar to butterfly has captured the imagination of millions of Americans; and whereas both the Western and Eastern monarch populations have seen significant declines, with less than 1% of the Western monarch population remaining, while the Eastern population has fallen by as much as 90%; and whereas the City of Nacogdoches recognizes that human health ultimately depends on well-functioning ecosystems, and that biodiverse regions can better support food production, healthy soil and air quality, and can foster healthy connections between humans and wildlife; and whereas cities, towns, and counties have a critical role to play to help save the monarch butterfly. The City of Nacogdoches is striving to become a leader and is committed to taking meaningful action to protect the monarch butterfly; and whereas every resident can make a difference for the monarch by planting native milkweed and nectar plants to provide habitat for the monarch and pollinators in locations where people live, work, learn, play, and worship. Now therefore be it proclaimed that I Shelley Brophy, Mayor of the City of Nacogdoches, and on behalf of City Council, do hereby proclaim April 6, 2021, as Mayor's Monarch Pledge Day in the City of Nacogdoches, and encourage all residents to participate in community activities that support and celebrate monarch conservation." Mayor, we're going to try to call Robert in one more time. Okay.
035204525 is full and cannot accept new messages at this time. Please try again later. Goodbye.
Okay, we will move to our open forum. We have one person that has signed up. Is that correct, Jan?
Yes, correct.
Okay. Open forum is the public's opportunity to address the council on any matter related to the city that is not on tonight's agenda. Your comments are limited to three minutes, and in accordance with the Texas Open Meetings Act, the City Council generally cannot discuss, consider, or take action on matters not listed on tonight's agenda. And signed up, we have Pat Castella.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Thank you.
Okay.
Please don't time me yet. Okay. I ask that City Council repeal ordinance 1833-0820 because it has many flaws. R4 is not a proper zoning for an older historic neighborhood. It will not help the tax base because of the many problems it will cause. It also violates Section 1 of the ordinance and Section 118 of zoning ordinance. There are also ethical violations that were done by the zoning commissioner who requested the change. Next, I wish to correct erroneous statements regarding Logan's Port Street that were published and/or written by a sitting council member. He states there is nothing special or historical about the block. He mentions a runhound house that has overgrown grass. He states that 500 feet around the property, the majority of property are multifamily, not single. Fact, there are more than 15 single-family properties, and although the zoning is incorrect, the residents are willing to revisit this problem. Though, he states, "The people on this street may not like the decision," and that is correct. At least 95% of the residents in this area signed a petition opposed to this inappropriate zoning for our historic and beautiful neighborhood. Fact, this inappropriate and ethically challenged zoning was opposed by more than 300 residents who have called and asked, mainly because of the precedent it is setting for our city and our cherished neighborhoods. He states, "We need more 100,000 to 250,000 properties in Nacogdoches." I agree, and the R2 residence on Logan's Port Street at 1122 is valued at $150,000, and we would be delighted if those lots were filled with city single-family housing. Not a duplex development that the owner stated he will run out to students to make a profit for his retirement. There's already a development on Martinsville Street that is being done by a company that will probably meet this need for students. I agree, we need more single-family housing, not rental properties built by speculators. Number seven, infill and tax base. Page 71 of Land Use and Fiscal Analysis, 2020, states, "Not all development is good development when it comes to long-term fiscal sustainability and a city's ability to provide services and maintain neighborhoods over time." Who will pay for these streets that will have to be built? The fire department, the police, the water company, all of the needs that are needed to be met to service these developments, the taxpayers. Zoning should be done with great care and by people on boards who are not real estate speculators, who put profit before neighborhoods and the history of our beautiful city of Nacogdoches. And I thank you now, because I was afraid I'd run out of time, for all of the work that you do, and I do appreciate everything, but I also am not always in sync with you. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Castella. Moving on to our consent agenda, if council will like to pull anything for comments or discussion, please do so. If not, Chair would entertain a motion for approval.
Mayor, I would like to discuss with someone on items, consent agenda items, B through I.
B through I.
D.
D.
D is in David, yes.
D is in David. Okay, so we're going to do that. Mr. Kanasari. Would you like to have someone else?
No, I guess I would be it.
Okay, okay, that's great. What are your questions? Go right ahead.
I was, the location that's being struck off is basically in low-income areas. And there is one, this company I'm not familiar with, KAVYU, has at least five of those locations. Has they indicated to the city as to why they purchased these properties? Are they planning on new constructions? Because they're blank, empty spot.
I'm not aware of anything, Councilmember, of this company and what their intentions are. We can certainly reach out to them through information that we've received, either through the school district or through the appraisal district, on their contact information, and try to find out what, maybe what their plans are, or what they're looking to do with those properties.
Also, could we look into whether the city could apply, and because, like, $16,000 property, and they bid it $900 and received this property. Now, we want to try to revitalize our communities, and if there was any type of grant funding, et cetera, that if the city could keep that property within the city and maybe grant funding, et cetera, we could build housing for low-income?
We can look at that. So just to make sure I'm understanding, so the thought would be, as opposed to those, some of those properties that are being struck off the rolls, instead of it going through a private individual or a company, that the city would try to participate in that process, basically do some, do land banking, per se, of some of these properties to then hold and see about working through a process to, for redevelop through other programs, grant programs, for low to moderate income housing, is that correct?
Correct.
For owners, owner-occupied, or for rent?
No, I'm not for rent. I have a feeling that most of this is going to be high-rent for low-income people.
Well, why don't we do this, if it's okay? Let us, let staff go back and research, see how that process works. I'd like to get a little bit more educated on that process myself, and then, and see what options does the government have to work through that process as well, and come back to you at a later meeting with maybe a workshop, if that's okay?
That's very good. Appreciate it very much.
You bet. Anything else?
No, that's it.
Okay.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
So does anyone want, need to pull anything else for comments, questions? Okay, if not, Chair would entertain a motion.
I make a motion to approve the consent agenda as it is written.
I'll second.
Okay, moved and seconded that we approve the consent agenda as written. If no further discussion, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. So moving to our regular agenda, our first item is receive Nacogdoches County Exposition Center and Civic Center annual report. And welcome, Anita Scott. Nice to see you.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for having me. Let me see, we've got a slideshow here, so.
Okay.
You got it working. Again, thank y'all for having me. I'm excited to be here. My name is Anita Scott. I'm the Director for the Expo Center. I'm also the Chief Coordinator for the Pony Woods Fair and the Nacogdoches Pro Rodeo and Steer Show. And I'm here today to give an economic impact, or report on our economic impact of the events made on the Nacogdoches during the last physical year, ending October the 1st, 2020. But before I begin, I just want to acknowledge my staff for their dedication to the expo. I've got to, can I take this off? Thank you. I want to begin by recognizing my staff. They're not with me today, but I've included a picture of them, and again, they're wearing the jackets that we had made for them for the rodeos, so they're supporting their jackets. Again, that's Carrie Scanlon, the Administrative Assistant, and also our maintenance team members Brad Hale, Darrell Hill, and Kent O'Neal. Our mission is always to support the youth, the agriculture, and our community by hosting and helping promote live music concerts, trade shows, exhibitions, livestock shows, youth rodeos, pro rodeos, county fair, the Texas A&amp;M AgriLife Extension, CEU classes, jail training classes, city and county meetings, and many other events that draw people from near and far. It's no secret to anyone, though, that 2020 was not a friend of event centers, restaurants, hotels, and for us, our economic impact was looking so good from October the 1st, 2019, until Friday, March 13th, 2020. At that point, we had already hosted 69 events with many more scheduled on our books. We were just one week away from hosting the 40th Annual Nacogdoches Pro Rodeo and Steer Show when COVID-19 struck, and talk about a punch in the gut. That was so hard for us. But anyway, we, this event was three days, and it was the first of many cancellations to follow. Between March 13th and September 30th of 2020, 40 more events were canceled due to the pandemic. This, of course, resulted in a loss of revenue, and it also impacted our, affected our economic impact for Nacogdoches. However, with the voluntary staff reduction and the reduction in utility usage, our expenditures decreased as well, so this did help offset some of the loss in our rental revenue. The good news, though, y'all, is that our staff is healthy, we are resilient, and we are dedicated. We continue to work diligently every day, and we look forward to hosting events again without fear of cancellation, restrictions, and shutdowns. Like most events, when the Expo Center wasn't able to host our events due to the COVID restrictions, we kicked into cleaning mode. And when I talk about cleaning mode, I'm talking about deep cleaning. We didn't let grass grow under our feet. We stayed busy. We started at the front of the property, and we worked our way all the way to the back. We rebuilt rotten retainer walls. We painted all of the rails on our holding pins. Let's see here, I'm sorry, y'all. Excuse me. Let me catch up here. These are all of the events that we hosted in 2019, 2020. We started at the front of the, and we worked our way all the way to the back of the property. We rebuilt retainer walls. We painted all of the holding pins on the property. We built and painted parking barricades to use during our Pony Woods Fair. We discarded probably five years' worth of clutter, and we reorganized our shop. Again, like I said, we stayed very busy, and if these pictures are just a small example of what we did while we were shut down. We trudged our way through swampy areas in the back of the property, cutting down trees and limbs and brush. We hauled flatbed trailer loads of scrap metal to the scrapyard. Needless to say, y'all, we stayed busy. We used our time wisely, and we took full advantage of this downtime. Uh-oh, let's see here, let me go back. By the end of September of 2020, we hosted 78 separate events and one eight-day emergency evacuation shelter due to Hurricane Laura. 50 of those events were one-day events, seven of those were two-day events, and 21 of those events were multiple-day events. With, and also, we had, we rented 180 RV spots, generated approximately 1,300 hotel rooms. The combination of these events attracted an estimated 49,000 visitors, which was approximately 17,000 down from the previous year. And again, this, uh-oh. This is the slide for the Hurricane Laura that we did. We had 60 evacuees during this time, and again, it was eight days of shelter mode. With permission from the CVB, my assistant Carrie Scanlon used their account with Destinations International to calculate our economic impact. She entered every single individual event, which calculated our direct business sales, that's gas, meals, retail, recreation, and lodging, at an estimated $2,438,000. Our estimated total economic impact, which includes induced and indirect income, is $3,405,000. Also, per Destinations International's formula, they estimated the total number of jobs supported by, locally by our events to be 1,700. I always think that's pretty neat, that they, that we get to see what an impact that makes. I think that's neat. Like I stated earlier, though, our mission is the support of youth, agriculture, and community. With that being said, the past few months, the Expo Center has been a host location for COVID drive-through testing, and we are now hosting COVID vaccination clinics inside the Civic Center. We have already hosted five shot clinics to date and have at least six more scheduled on our books, and many more to come. So although we have not been able to host as many, or to generate as many heads and hotel beds as we would like, we do hope that you find the Civic Center and the staff as a valuable asset to Nacogdoches, and that we are helping our community, we are working with our emergency management team to keep heads out of hospital beds. So, you know, again, I think that's just our way of being an asset to Nacogdoches, and I hope you think so as well. Let's see here. Since October the 1st, 2020, we have already hosted 31 events, with two of those being a two-day gun show, a two-day equestrian drill team competition, a three-day Region Five High School rodeo, and a very successful three-day 40th Annual 2021 Nacogdoches Pro Rodeo and Steer Show, which benefited the Nacogdoches J.C.'s. That was just a couple of weeks ago that we did that. We are actively working with promoters, and we do plan to host more events, like the Parker McCollum Concert on April the 24th, and the Cody Johnson Concert on June the 12th. But our top priority right now is being available and ready to host COVID vaccination clinics at a moment's notice. Again, we've got other promoters that we're working with that I haven't talked about, and that is, one of them is a dog, canine dive competition, and they're coming from another state, so I'm anticipating that to generate a lot of hotel nights as well. So that's going to happen in the fall. You'll hear more about that later. You can find out more information about events coming up on our Facebook page as contracts are confirmed, and you can also access our calendar of events from our website, that's snackexpo.net. In closing, I want to say thank you to the CVB for extending us the use of their account with Destinations International to calculate our economic impact. Thank y'all for having me. If y'all have any questions, I'll be glad to answer them. If I can't answer them, I'll be glad to find an answer for you. Thank y'all so much for having me.
Of course, thank you, Anita. Would you hold on half a second?
I sure can, I can.
So as per usual, is there anyone here that has a comment they would like to make after this presentation? Okay. So, Council, Mr. Bolden, is there anything you'd like to ask or comment?
Thank you very much for the presentation. I always look forward for the events at Expo Center, especially the Pony Woods Fair.
Yes, sir. I do see you there.
Because I'm having withdrawals on my stuff out of peanut peppers. Are we on schedule for Pony Woods Fair?
Yes, sir, we are. We are on, in fact, I've been visiting with Evans United Carnival Company, and we've got some things we're working on right now, and so, yes, we do plan to have them. We also have the Spring Carnival coming up in May. I didn't mention that, but we are working on that. And like I said, a whole lot of events that I didn't mention here, but just trust me and know that we are working on them, and we do plan to have the Pony Woods Fair in October.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome, sir.
Keep up the good work.
Thank you, sir. I appreciate it.
Councilmember Anderson.
No questions, really, just mainly thank you for the presentation, and thanks for you and your staff being very creative.
Yes, sir.
In a difficult year.
It was.
And also for all that y'all have done to help with vaccination clinics, those have run so smoothly, and I know y'all are a big part of that.
Yes, sir. You know, you're welcome. You know, like I said, we wanted to stay busy. I wanted my staff to stay busy, and wanted us to not sit around idle. We wanted to work for our pay, and we did, and we continue to. I've got a great staff that is very dedicated. You know, when I talk about them, I always want to choke up because they work so hard, and they're out there, and you don't see how hard they work, but I do, and I appreciate them, and I, you know, just, I'm thankful. We are very blessed to have the staff that we have out there, and it takes dedication. We are a small team. We haven't had the inmates as we always are used to having, so a lot of the work was, you know, put on the staff to do, and they did it, and they stayed busy, like I said, and mowing, and weed eating, and things like that. The inmates have started coming back, and we are so thankful. They've been a big help. They are a huge help to us in making sure that we, you know, we want to keep the property clean and nice and neat, and the curbs cleaned and everything, and that's a big property for three men to keep up with, so the inmates are very, very much appreciated out at the Expo Center.
Any questions? Councilmember Fisher.
You mentioned in your presentation that you hoped that you guys were a valuable asset to the city, and I don't think that there's a question about that.
Oh, thank you.
Particularly with the way that you guys have handled the vaccination clinics together with the local emergency management team.
Yes, ma'am.
As I understand it, our clinics are the model for the area.
Wow.
And how they're run so efficiently and so well, and I know that you guys play a big part in that.
Yes, ma'am.
So thank you for all of the work that you do, and for, and for that in particular this year.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am, thank you. I'm glad that y'all feel that way, because, you know, we definitely want to be a team member, and we are honored to do that. I think that's what we're supposed to be doing, and I'm just glad to be a part of it. I'm glad.
Thank you.
Your group is also, you and your staff, have also garnered a reputation for making the best of a bad situation.
Oh, thank you.
And that is something that's really difficult to do, and I give you a lot of that credit.
Thank you.
In working with them and finding all of that, because people do feel more valuable when they are actually doing something.
Right.
And so I think that's terrific. And to echo about the clinics, you know, you have also, are being talked about out there, because you may not hear it, from the hospitals and from SFA, as well as the city, what a great partners you all have been, and how easy you've made it for them to do the things that they need to do for our community. So you've got a whole bunch of people that really know about what you're doing and appreciate everything you do.
Well, I feel it, I do. And again, like I said, we are honored to be a part of it, truly, truly honored to be a part of it. I wouldn't want to have that vaccination clinic anywhere else but right there where we're having it. And so I think that that's what we're supposed to be doing. I know that we need to be generating hotels, heads and beds, I know that, but right now, in this unusual time, I think that this is what we need to be doing, and we're honored to be a part of it.
Well, of course. I think your contract, that's what your contract is with the city to do that.
Yes, ma'am.
However, these are extraordinary times.
Yes, ma'am.
And so you have really stepped up.
Yes, ma'am.
And I don't think there's any question about that, so that's not a problem.
Yeah, well, we've got a good, a good leader, Judge Sal, you know, he's a great leader for us, and so we're very blessed in that manner, and so it's just a good, it starts at the top, and so he's good, he's been a good leader for us, and we've got some good team members, Tara Triana, and Michael Self, and all of those. So, you know, again, what we do at the Expo Center is not a one-man band. It is truly a, it is everybody working together, always, and so that's what makes a great team, that's what makes us successful, and it's just, we live in a great community.
Yes, we do.
Thank y'all.
Thank you, Anita. Appreciate it.
If it's okay, I'll be excused. I've got a grandson that's playing T-ball, or not T-ball, but ball, so he's going to be waiting on me.
We understand.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much. Do we want to try to call again, or?
Yes.
Okay. You just need to kind of let me know if you want to, when you want to try that. Okay. You just need to kinda let me know if you wanna, when you wanna try that.
Hello?
Mr. Davis?
Hello. Yes.
Good evening. It's, it's Mayor Brophy. How are you?
Good, Mayor. How are you?
I'm fine. We were pausing, uh, during our meeting to just, to get you, um, joined up.
Well, fantastic. Thank you very much. I don't know why my phone wouldn't take the last call. It came through this time.
Okay. Well, terrific. Well, thank you for joining us this evening. We're gonna resume, uh, our, our meeting now. We are on our, uh, regular agenda item. We're going to start with B.
Great. Thank you, Mayor.
Uh-huh. Thank you. So B is consider approval of strategic priorities for the city of Nacogdoches, Texas, as discussed at the city council retreat held in February. Mr. Conasares?
Good evening, Mayor, Members of Council. Let me bring this presentation up real quick. Just wanted to provide a few slides, uh, to give, uh, for the audience and those watching, a little bit of background of what you all went through back in, in, it seems like forever ago, uh, just February eleventh, uh, just before the big winter storms that we had here in the, in the entire state. Uh, but just kinda give a recap of, of some of the things that you all talked about. And then at the end, uh, really hone in on the, on those priorities that you all set and see how you wanna proceed with those. So on February the eleventh, twenty twenty-one, the city council participated in a professionally facilitated offsite event or retreat. Uh, we held that at the, at the rec center. It was an, it was an open meeting. We did have a few members of the, of the public present for that, for that, uh, discussion. It was facilitated by Mike Mauri. He is a, uh, a professional facilitator with Strategic Government Resources, better known as SGR. Uh, he came, uh, and, and it is my understanding that he had met with you all individually ahead of the, of the retreat with, uh, just sort of with open-ended questions to, to ask, what are some of your, your hopes and aspirations for the city? What are some of the concerns that you have, the good things, the bad things? Uh, just really just very open-ended number of, uh, questions that create some dialogue with you to look at some recurring themes that you all may have. And that way it, it, you don't start cold on that day. You already had some discussions with the consultant. And so, um, with that, um, he, uh, uh, gave some instructions to council as far as, uh, how he wanted to approach it. Uh, the entire council was present, uh, including myself. And, you know, people may ask, why did you have it facilitated? Why didn't staff do it? Well, uh, it, it was based on, you know, input from you all that you wanted me to be a part of the, the process. Even though it was for council, you wanted as your city manager to be part of this facilitated process. And so that's why we thought it would bring the outside consultant in to help us facilitate that completely objective, uh, uh, process with really no, um, um, uh, preconceived notions. And that way they can come in, do the work, provide you a summary report, and then, uh, you all can then consider it later. Um, the, really the three topics, three areas of the day that we, we covered, uh, that, that afternoon and into the, from the morning into the afternoon. Uh, the first two were, what are the city's, uh, reputational drivers? Uh, we'll cover that here shortly. The second one was, what are some of the most pressing needs that you all see that's facing the city, uh, in the near future? And then lastly, uh, the intent was, based on all those discussions and conversations, um, uh, to create some priorities to address items number one and number two. So when we talk about reputational drivers, uh, really the intent of that was, what are the things that you want to be known for? What is the reputation that you want to be known for as, as, as a, as an elected body, um, as, as a community, et cetera? And so one of the things that you all discussed, uh, from a standpoint of you all as the elected body, uh, from a reputation, and this is a give-and-take conversation. So a lot of discussions were had in a smaller group. We divided, the consultant divided you all into two smaller groups, or maybe actually three smaller groups. And then you all came together and, and, and conveyed your thoughts. And then he took those summarized comments and these are some of the, uh, key themes that were pulled from those discussions. Um, first and foremost, you felt like you wanted to make sure that you represented the entire community, obviously you being elected officials, that when you do so, that when you have, um, discussions here at council, that you, that it's thoughtful, that as far as the discussions that you have are thoughtful and that you take actions accordingly. Uh, that you communicate with vision and with policy, with excellence, consistency and relevance. And that you're trying to make, um, life better for everyone, not just, not just those that have the most resources, but even those that don't have a voice and, 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 and may, and may not have the most means to be able to, uh, fully represent themselves. You wanna make sure that you're looking after them as well. Uh, and then, um, uh, continuing on, you wanted to make sure that, that when you have these meetings and you're having these discussions, that, that we are engaging the community or you all are engaged in the community, uh, and that you're practicing transparency. And then lastly, you wanted to be known as a trustworthy council in that, again, through the decisions that you make, that the count, that the community as a whole, uh, trusts that decisions are being made that are being made, uh, to benefit the entire community, not just a few. The next component on the reputational drivers that was talked about was, um, you know, the city's quality of life. You wanted to make sure that, um, through policy discussions and through, uh, and through, um, um, future budgets and future, uh, resources as they're allocated, that we have opportunities to provide a higher quality of life for our residents, um, that we, um, lower any barriers for people to get involved, that we're always striving to be better, again, striving to, to be better, to, uh, certainly, uh, make, uh, do things better than what we did them before. To know and be known. Uh, and, and one of the things that was, that was critical in that conversation is, is just to make sure that Nacogdoches is on the map. While we are a small town, we do have the benefit of having a university here. We have our natural assets and natural beauty, uh, historic downtown. And so really the, the importance there, at least from my take and from, 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 from my take as your city manager based on the conversations, is you wanted to make sure that Nacogdoches was relevant, not just in this region, but all over the state and maybe really all over the country. Uh, and then you wanted to make sure that, uh, you are, that this community is known to have a vibrant economy, knowing that we're right on the heels of, uh, hopefully on the, on the other side, the better side of this pandemic as we go to the recovery. Uh, but that we have a vibrant economy, uh, that we have because of our natural beauty, our natural assets. We're not, um, while we are a small town, there is a lot of activity, but we're not, uh, a suburban community. We're not certainly a, a large city with, with, uh, large amounts of traffic that it's known for its peaceful settings because of just, uh, its parks, its, its areas of respite. So you wanted to make sure that you maintain that, that quality. Um, and then you also wanted to make sure that we work towards providing, uh, opportunities for attainable housing, knowing that, um, uh, and if you read newspaper articles or articles in the news, you see the housing shortage. That's not just happening here in Nacogdoches. It's really happening all over the state of Texas. Um, there's huge amounts of demands of people as they move into the state from other states. Um, and the, just that, the, the housing is very challenging. And you have, uh, pocket, while you do have pockets of homes that are available, it's typically on either extreme. You have some on the low end, you have some on the higher end, but it's that middle area that we're really struggling with because just as they are become, as they do become available, they're quickly, um, they're quickly purchased, they're quickly snatched up. So, um, so how do we look at opportunities where we can, um, encourage, uh, this, uh, this additional development? It doesn't have to be through incentivization. It could be through just a review of policy, through infill housing. Um, so, um, again, that's just one of those conversations that were had, uh, as part of the reputational drivers. And then the last piece on the reputational drivers is economic vitality. Again, um, you know, we, um, are on the cusp of, of, of potentially having some growth. There is, um, um, some goals that Dr. Scott Gordon, the SFA president, has laid upon his staff to grow the university's enrollment by five percent by this fall. So, so that's an ambitious goal, but, but it is a goal. And, 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 and you need to have these kinds of goals to, to move to the next level. You know, I've spoken to you individually and I've spoken to many folks in, in, in our community. Uh, as I've made my, my initial few months here on the job is, is that we do need to grow our, our population. Our population has, has been relatively stagnant the last ten years. And so it is time to, to look at growth, but it doesn't need to be done. It needs to be done in a sustainable, in a sustainable manner with an eye for, for, uh, environmental health. So, uh, meaning that you don't necessarily just have to continue building new subdivisions and additional concrete and additional things. There can be other ways in which you can make these things happen. Continuing on the theme of the university and, and finding a pla- and, and career opportunities, uh, this needs to be a place where people can, can start and stay. You got people that graduate on an annual basis from SFA, uh, between three and three thousand five hundred students on an annual basis. And many of those folks, unless they're, unless they're from this region, go back to their respective homes. We need to continue to encourage job growth so that folks stay here. Uh, and include, that includes the city government. We, uh, through the pandemic and, and in previous years have had to, to, uh, reduce staffing levels or hold on or, or, or not add staffing because of budgetary constraints to the pandemic. And, and, you know, but as we look at, um, the way we do business, we're at a point that we probably need to start adding some additional staff in certain areas because we are, we are behind. We're always very reactionary, not much proactivity in, in some of our areas of, of the city. And so we need to start adding some additional, uh, job growth here and, and within the, um, city government. Um, and that we need to be family-friendly. Um, and, uh, and when people come here to visit, uh, we just received a report from the Civic Center about, about their activities that they were trying to do, but they couldn't. And the things that they're trying to get back going again in twenty twenty-one. We wanna make sure when people come to Nacogdoches, that they're not just visiting, that they're visiting and they're having a memorable experience. I keep saying that, uh, when we have our events, as small as they may be, and even some of the small ones that we're having, that we've had and we're having, uh, one of our events is coming, uh, this coming Saturday with the Wine Swirl. Uh, you know, uh, my understanding, we're almost sold out, uh, which is a great thing. So I think people are very excited about that. Uh, but when people do visit, if they're not from this area, I hope they have a great time. I hope they really enjoyed themselves and it plants a seed for people that when they come here, they, they have fun, it, it leaves a memorable impression and that they come back. And if they come back, maybe they spend more money and more time here. And maybe they even may decide to move here. And that's not a bad thing. I think we can certainly do that. And so, um, so it was really a good thoughtful conversation with, with the council about the, uh, about, uh, the reputational drivers. So then we transitioned, um, later in the af- or morning into the afternoon, uh, about some of the pressing needs. And, um, uh, the following slide after, after I cover this, you, you can see this and there's no, they're, they're not in any priority order. They were just, as they were listed and as the consultant, uh, uh, provided it to us. But really what are the pressing needs that are of concern to council are the issues? And so again, um, one of the common themes that I, that I've heard through my discussions with, with city staff and people in the community is about, about infrastructure. So it was no surprise that, that was probably tops on the list for many of you. Uh, so we need to start addressing, um, the infrastructure issues that we have in our city. Uh, there's no surprise too that the next one with I sixty-nine, uh, coming through town, we need to make sure that we're proactive when it comes to the planning and development of that corridor because it, it, additional traffic will happen, additional development will happen. And we wanna make sure that as we, as this happens, that we do this in a controlled, managed manner. Uh, discussions revolved around, um, uh, the renovation and preservation of neglected neighborhoods. Um, Mr. Bolden earlier, uh, pulled a few items out of con- off consent, uh, and that's a very, that very thing. And so the thought is, is how, how can, while we may not be able to do all things because we're limited in the abilities and purview of what city government can do, but we can certainly work with area foundations, uh, the private sector, uh, other groups, other nonprofit, uh, other nonprofit groups to help bring back and work on, uh, areas within our community that have been historically neglected or that need some additional renovation. Um, another recurring theme is the continued collaboration and community engagement of N I S D. You know, I'm really happy to say that, that I have a really good relationship with Dr. Treheo, uh, the superintendent. I believe he's coming up on his one-year anniversary. I believe this, I think he started it in, in April of last year. And so, uh, but it's really been good to have that collaborative relationship with him, um, on these number of months that I've been here. Uh, he's a new grandfather, so, um, just as of, I believe as of Monday, so excited for that. But really just that, that community engagement, um, with N I S D. They are a huge partner. Um, you know, many times that we talk with businesses and others that may be looking into the city, the biggest thing they're looking for is housing, labor, and what, where do their, where do their kids, their employees' kids, put their kids in school? And so it's important that we maintain that relationship and continue to raise the reputation of N I S D. Uh, the need for livable wages was one of the, uh, key issues that, that you all discussed. Uh, the unemployment, the underemployment in our community, how do we address that? Uh, again, as I'd mentioned before, in those previous, uh, items, uh, having some attainable housing stock. Uh, again, is again, we've got those issues where we've got two extremes, but is that sweet spot in the middle that, that we continue to struggle with? Um, addressing generational poverty. And then last is addressing the housing, social, the substance abuse and all the other, uh, detrimental issues that, that really hurt our quality of life for all of our residents. A lot of these are social issues. And again, the government can't do all of it. But again, it's working with those partners, setting aside, uh, resources that can be dedicated to those key, those key partners that can assist us and assist our community to, to hopefully increase their quality of life. Okay? And so based on all those discussions, and again, I'm kind of encapsulating those in just a few minutes because you spent a number of hours talking, uh, and it was good conversations, but, but obviously we don't have that kind of time here. Um, you all set aside approximately seven priorities, um, that were, were issues that you wanted to address in the, in those previous items that I just discussed. Now again, keep in mind that these are not in any priority order. They're just in alphabetical order. So, um, but, but what you all discussed, um, along the way, um, based on economic vitality, uh, you know, revi- revitalization of neighborhoods, et cetera. The first one was, uh, working on, uh, downtown and making sure that downtown is, A, a destination and it's known for entertainment. Um, you know, many things that I've heard, uh, about our downtown, it's wonderful, it's historic, people love being here. But there are some opportunities there that we could do better when it comes to doing some nightlife entertainment at, at, in the evening. Uh, we're starting that with our events, which we're very pleased with how they've happened so far with our Knack Snack on that last Friday of every, that last Friday of every month. Those have been very successful. But we wanna continue to do that. As I mentioned, we've got the Wine Swirl this Saturday. We're gonna be, we're, we're starting all of our events as we, you all discussed back in February. And so, but how do we create that downtown, uh, Nacogdoches as a, as a, as someplace that you wanna be, uh, be known as a destination and also for entertainment? And that's beyond just a special events. It's the evenings and, uh, restaurants, bars, music venues, et cetera. The second priority that you set aside is to make sure that we focus on revitalization of our neighborhoods and, uh, looking at, um, attainable housing options. Thirdly was to do, make sure that we improve on our community engagement to foster a diverse environment. We need to improve on our city's infrastructure and that we maximize the I sixty-nine, uh, development. And we should make sure that we're planning for that. Uh, promotion of economic development to make sure we can pay the bills for the future. Uh, and then lastly, and I can spend a, just a little bit of time on that seventh one, um, to improve value-driven education and job training for the entire community. Um, while we are city government, we're not in the education business. That's what happens at N I S D or at SFA. However, we do have situations where, as I mentioned, a lot of times employers are looking for a labor pool. And they're looking for a certain type of educated labor pool. And if we, and if we fall short of that, then sometime we just won't be, people will skip over us. And so we need to make sure that while we are not educators, we provide city services. Uh, first and foremost, we can work with those educational partners, whether it's N I S D, certainly, um, Angelina College or SFA on making sure that we have programs set aside for our, our over eighteen-year-old, uh, community, our residents, to make sure that when the opportunity strikes, that we have programs that helps them get, um, certified in certain type of skill sets, uh, so they can look at bettering themselves and going to that next job with hopefully higher wage with. with with certainly better pay, better benefits, and they can increase their quality of life. So, before I move on to the next slide, I just wanted to make sure, any questions that you have so far? I've been talking kind of fast. Well, I know I've been talking fast, but I just wanted to make sure that before we move forward that if you have any questions on any of the items that I've presented so far.
Do you want to stop now if this is the presentation portion for public comment?
We can, and then, because I do have some slides about options to consider and then next steps, if that's okay. So we can stop, or you would like for me to finish?
No, I think this would be, I mean, this is your, the the basic presentation.
Yes ma'am, it sure is.
So I think this would be a good time to see if there is any public comment about this presentation. Yes, Ms. Castella, come on up, please.
First of all, I would like to thank you for all the time that I know it took to do this work and it is a lot of work. And my only thoughts are as follows. I appreciate revitalization and neighborhoods and housing. And I once again reiterate that single-family housing is important. And I reiterate, we would welcome that on Logan's Port Street. The second thing I would like to address is, let me see, I have to find it. Okay, communication and representing the entire community. And I know we do the best we can do, but I do have a question here. And my question refers to not strategic planning, but when are the zoning signs going to be put up in front of properties that are going to be rezoned? And I I was wondering when that would happen? And maybe that will be addressed in the options. Otherwise, thank you. But please don't forget neighborhood revitalization. It's not revitalized by student dormant, uh, housing. Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay. Mr. Conizares?
So then, so really, you know, I've gone through all that and so really just wanted to throw out some options for the council. Certainly to prove the priorities as they were presented, approve some, but not all the priorities. Certainly, we don't have to do, you don't have to do anything. You can just come, just do nothing or completely start over. Or if you have other priorities that were not listed, that either the consultant or I missed the mark and that we need to either add in or remove. So so really, with that and then, depending on what you do, if you do approve the priorities, one of the things that I would like to do and working with staff is create a communication plan that we can reach out to the community, explain what's been happening, what are these, what do these things mean? I think it, you know, as we, and again, it's 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 one of those touchy subjects because we still are in a pandemic, but but find ways that we can either creatively through online forums or even some in-person forums, if we can do it right, and start having some feedback sessions with residents. Certainly, working with our our business community, I can work with Netco through our chamber. We can go through a number of different ways to to engage our business partners and other community partners, our nonprofits, United Way, Boys and Girls Club, all those various entities that obviously are are major players to help address some of the things that you all said were were considered priorities through that discussion. And then certainly, we've got to communicate with our employees. I I presented this draft presentation to our management team this morning, just so they can see. And I say, it's not a done deal yet, but but I hope it is, but it's not a done deal. But we didn't need to continue to communicate and over-communicate to our staff. Because if, as we do this, if you won't do approve it, then I will be charging my department heads to start creating work plans, to start addressing these things. And we will address it through the current budget in some regards because there are things already kind of in the queue. And then we'll be addressing a lot of these things in the next upcoming budget and future budgets to come. And then lastly is obviously, we've got to report to you the progress that's being made. And and the way we would do this and and not to get real granular, but but if we're bringing items to you for consideration, whether it's, for example, you've got an item on your agenda today to, or you did have an item on your agenda today to, on on consent, to approve the the vaccine administration and and distribution. You know, again, what we would like to do is as part of those AISs, Agenda Information Sheets, is to continue to hone in on if we're presenting an item on council, does it fall within one of these seven categories? Sometimes they may not, but most of the times they should. And if they do, then we need to reinforce that in the staff reports that's presented to you just as another way to kind of make sure we're catching ourselves, you all as elected officials are making sure when you're asking the questions, you're, why is this being presented? Oh, yes, it's directed to that strategic priority. And then as we go through a series of time, whether it's every quarter or every few, every six months or certainly on an annual basis, we can do kind of a look back to see of all the things that we presented to coun- presented to council and they acted on, were, did these things hit on these priorities? And some of them may be just a single priority, some of them may may hit all of them or just a few. But I think we need to make sure that we're going back and accounting for those things that that you all prioritize as as those strategies for our community. And with that, I'm done.
Well, I find this so exciting and so re-energizing, I think, individually and as a council and for, and exciting for our city. Let's start with Councilmember Anderson. Comments or questions?
No particular questions, really. I I would definitely like to thank you and Ms. Vincent for your efforts and the initiative in in organizing this. And I, I was not skeptical going into it, but I didn't understand how beneficial it would be until we did it. And I'm glad that we now have, you know, potentially anyway, kind of an outline to to work from and something that can be revisited by us and by future councils as as a way to 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 hone in on these things that are important. I I was very grateful that that we got to do that and I, my opinion anyway, was that it was very beneficial.
Councilmember Fisher?
Yes, thank you. I agree that it was very energizing and exciting and I haven't changed my mind since February. But I I'm really interested in getting a mechanism in place for community input, like you talked about. And I'm a little bit concerned with the order of things with adopting the priorities tonight before getting community input on those priorities. I know that that we are a representative democracy and we are elected representatives, but what if we go out and we seek community input on these priorities and we get something back saying, what, number four? No. You know, I mean, I, and and that's a consensus from the community. I would like for there to be an opportunity, if there's pushback or what about consider this priority from from the community after receiving input, that we could revisit and and say, okay, do we need to rework a couple of things? Do we need to add something? Is this something that we were way off base about? That's that's my only, that would be my only comment, is adding in a little step before saying, adopting priorities, community input, and then regardless, moving forward with work plans. Does that make sense?
Sure does.
That that's what I got. And and hopefully, we can do that because it just, there's something wrong to me about about developing, developing the plans and sort of seeking community input, but not allowing that to affect in any way the the path moving forward.
Would you consider? Not, let's see. Well, just just as a thought, because I sort of, you know, if it's exciting and if it's re-energizing, then you want to kind of harness that momentum. And I think time is important to get something started. And I think if you adopt these the way they are or with minor changes, if you'd like, that lets the public know what the people that they elected are looking at as our priorities. And then with input, with public input, then they could be amended if they needed to and re-adopted. I mean, it could be a work in, I see it more as a work in progress anyway. This isn't fixed for the next period of time.
Yeah.
And I think if we, if we stop, and I don't know how long you allow for public input before we do this, it keeps us from from really starting on in, on on it, you know, the way we were intending.
Yeah, I I agree with harnessing the the energy and not needlessly either backtracking or putting pauses in, but I also think that community input is important. And so I I I don't, I don't see a problem with adopting tonight, as long as there's a chance to revisit if if we're off base.
Well, I mean, I think, I mean, it's number three on your on your priorities on the screen. I mean, that's what it's about. I mean, if 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 you all say economic development is key and the community says, we don't care about economic development, I I think you as council or future councils need to reprioritize your priorities. And so I think part of that is, I think the built-in mechanism is right there. I mean, you all worked through that process to build in the mechanism to get the input from the community so that you can be revisiting. I mean, you you know, you're both right. I mean, it's, there needs to be input, obviously, there needs to be energy, but you've got to start somewhere. And and at the time, leading up to that discussion on in February, you know, it was just the beginnings of the vaccine deployment, everything was on shutdown. And so people were just, I just want to get back to normal. That's what people wanted. But I think, but but I think, like I said, you have the built-in mechanisms, those levers that you can pull, that if these items aren't important to the community at large, then we adjust.
Yeah, I just want to make sure I'm fine with with adopting as long as that community input and having a mechanism in place for, one, getting the community input and, two, adapting if we need to, that that's kept in mind and and really at the forefront.
Oh, I I just wanted to to interject. You know, my my understanding from the beginning of this process was that this was not anything to be chiseled in stone. What what about the idea of setting a specific time at which we revisit these in between now and then? Make sure that we have a mechanism in place and get some community input before we revisit these. You know, whether it's three months, six months.
Well, one thing I would add, if it's possible, you know, and again, I think you all enjoyed that process with the facilitator, whether it's that one or another one. It's not a bad idea to have an annual check-in with with an offside. I mean, again, we can still host it there, we can host it at another place here in the city. But I think it's important on an annual basis that you as a collective body have an opportunity to brainstorm, hear what you've heard, talk about what you've heard, not constrained with, obviously, it's got to be posted, it's got to be an agenda, but it's not constrained with doing council business, which which is what you're doing. But allow you all to really talk about what you've heard over the last six, nine, twelve months. And so I think there's absolutely the built-in mechanism for engagement. And and again, if this council or future councils believe it's important to have these these discussions with an outside facilitator to come in and say, okay, you've adopted these things, how did it feel? Did you hit the mark? Did you not hit the mark? Are we missing something? Should we pare back? Should we add? I mean, so there's a lot of those things that that we can certainly do.
And I certainly, I don't want to undermine confidence in these pri- I feel very confident in these priorities. I think that each of us are 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 pretty deeply enmeshed in in the community and in in different parts of the community. And and so I think, I mean, at least from the people that I that I speak to, these are major issues. And and so I think that they're great. I think that it was a great retreat and I feel very confident about them. But I do want to make sure that that there's buy-in and input.
Anything else?
No.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Bolden?
Thank you, Mayor. Priorities. Setting priorities is is always a difficult task. You know, there's always subject to different opinions, et cetera. But it's always been something that we we don't, we have not done well in the past. And that was part of community engagement. We we have not community, we have not communicated very well to Nacogdoches as a whole. We have commun- communicated to certain diverse part of Nacogdoches, but not Nacogdoches as a whole. And that's where we are lacking in Nacogdoches as a growth, in my opinion. And and these priorities, like Councilman Jay was saying, is not set in stone. But we do need to start and and we may need to come back, make adjustment, three months, six months down the line. But setting certain issues as a priority. Well, now, communication would be one of the top priorities, in my opinion. So, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Hey, any, anything else anyone wants to add? Mr. Conizares, do you have anything else you would like to add, sir?
No, ma'am. Just looking for just approval.
Of course. So Chair will now entertain a motion.
We want to, is this to approve the report as a whole?
Yes.
Okay. Let's see, I make a motion to, for approval of strategic priority for the city of Nacogdoches, Texas, as discussed by the City Council Retreat held on February eleventh, two thousand twenty one.
Second. Okay, moved and seconded that we approve the strategic priorities for the city of Nacogdoches. With no further discussion, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you, sir. Item C, consider approval of a contract buying between the city and Dupla Chain Contractors for Ford Street Storm Sewer Rehabilitation Project. And we have, good evening, Case Offerman, how are you?
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. Please excuse me real quick while I get these pulled up here.
Yes, sir.
Good evening. Case Offerman, Assistant Director of Public Works. We're asking you tonight to consider approval of a contract between the city and Dupla Chain Contractors for the Ford Street Storm Sewer Rehabilitation Project. We've got a existing storm sewer line along the Ford Street corridor, basically from Harris Street to Virginia Avenue. It affects several properties, the most significant of which is a a large sinkhole which is formed in in the middle of one property. And so what we need, what we've had designed and have gone out to bid for is a relocation of the the portion that runs through the the sinkhole area to a better location around the outside of the property, rather than straight through the middle of the property, as well as some rehabilitation of an existing portion that goes under another subject property with a cast-in-place liner similar to the one that we are very presently going to be installing on Nor- South Ferdonia. This will include new storm sewer inlets, it'll include a new pipe and liner. And we had three bids on March twenty third for this work. Dupla Chain Contractors was the lowest at three hundred and seventeen thousand one hundred and fifty-five dollars. You can see this is well below the second and third low bidder, so we feel this is a a very good price. We've evaluated the the bid amounts and kind of inquired as to, you know, why these amounts were so much lower. And the Dupla Chains essentially said, we really wanted this job. So we we have a good working relationship with them. They're actually doing two other jobs for us right now, so they're a very trusted contractor. This work is only partially funded. We have a budget of three hundred thousand dollars in the CIP and. And um, the, the short answer to why that, that is, is, uh, the CIP process was done at the very beginning of the COVID season last year. And, uh, since then, between Hurricane Laura and, uh, shutdowns at these manufacturing facilities, prices on materials have just skyrocketed. So, um, $300,000 existing, we are going to, uh, uh, just a minute be asking for a budget amendment to cover the, the remainder, uh, of this cost in the amount of $100,000. But at this time, we'd ask you to consider approval of this construction contract in the amount of $317,155. And after public comment, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. So is there anyone, uh, here that has a comment they would like to make? Okay, seeing none. Councilmember Fisher, let's, uh, begin with you.
When would the construction start, Case?
Uh, well, as soon as we can get, uh, contracts executed. Jeff Dupla Chain told me he's ready to get a crew over there. So, uh, hopefully within the next few weeks.
Okay. Um, and then my other question has to do with the budget amendment, so I can save it for the next part.
Sure.
Uh, and Mr. Bolden.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. The $317,000, is the budget amendment going to cover that extra cost of the material and stuff?
Well, yes, sir, this, uh, $317,000 is their construction price for installing this, this line.
Okay.
And so, uh, their, their drive out, uh, barring any change order amounts, is, uh, $317,000.
You, you mentioned property is, and relocation.
Yes.
Is that private property, a city property?
It is private property, yes, sir.
Okay.
Yes.
Thank you.
It, it, but essentially, at this time, it goes straight through their, middle of their property. We're, we're trying to get it around the edge of the property and, uh, address the sinkhole at, at the same time.
Oh, the existing goes through the property?
Yes, sir.
Okay, private property, okay.
Mm-hmm. From basically Virginia to Harris Street.
Thank you.
And Councilmember Anderson.
No, no particular questions. I, that's in my neighborhood, so I'll be glad to see that repaired.
Okay, um, so if no further, uh, questions or comments, Chair would entertain a motion to approve that contract.
Well, I make a motion, uh, for approval of a contract buying in between the city of Nacogdoches and Dupla Chain Contractors for the Ford Street Storm Sewer Rehabilita- Rehabilitation Works.
I'll second.
Okay, moved and seconded that we approve, uh, the contract as it is written for item C. Uh, if no further questions, um, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. And item D, um, go right ahead.
City Council, uh, Case Offerman, Assistant Director of Public Works, again. Uh, we are, uh, going to now look at the, uh, budget amendment ordinance, uh, that we would ask you to consider for this work. Uh, as I stated, uh, previously, uh, the CIP was approved in the amount of $300,000 for this storm sewer replacement project. Um, and, uh, you know, Dupla Chain was the low bidder at $317,155. Uh, Sean Bergen Polk, who was our design consultant, um, we already have allocated, uh, funds for them for design and construction phase services in the amount of, uh, $41,300. So that leaves, um, about $41,000 in, uh, in basically a, amount that we could change order in just for any contingencies that may arise when they get out there and start moving dirt. But, um, we would ask for you to consider, uh, this budget amendment in the amount of $100,000, uh, to get us to a total budget of $400,000 for this work. Uh, this amount will be, um, from available reserve funds in the utility fund. So, uh, happy to answer any questions after public comment.
Thank you. Uh, is there anyone that has a comment they would like to make? Okay, hearing none. Mr. Bolden, you have any questions?
Uh, no.
Okay, Mr. Anderson?
No, I don't.
Ms. Fisher?
You answered both of my questions about where the money was coming from.
Okay.
And also the discrepancy between the 17,000, or, yeah, the 17,155 and the 100,000 requested, so, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, well, would you like to make a motion?
Sure, I will. I, uh, move that we, uh, where are we? D, that we approve, um, or that we amend ordinance number 1835 hyphen 09 hyphen 20, appropriating various amounts in accordance with budget adopted for ensuing fiscal year beginning October 1, 2020 and ending September 30th, 2021.
Okay.
Second.
Moved and seconded. If no further discussion, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion passes. And item E, we're going to consider an interlocal agreement, uh, co- form of contract with Stephen F. Austin State University. And we have our Director of Community Services, Mr. Bray, good evening.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, Brian Bray, you're Director of Community Services. SFA has had exclusive use of two of our fields at our baseball and adult softball complex. I apologize, Mayor, I didn't realize it was that loud, um, for several years. And we, we've had a great relationship with them. The, the city maintains ownership of the complex overall, while SFA on those two fields exclusively provide the equipment, the maintenance, um, the tickets, the, the programming. Anything related to activities at those two fields is SFA's responsibility, and we just lease them the land. They recently approached staff with a request for sale of beer and wine at those two fields. And the reason I have this map up here is to show it's those two areas in purple only, not the complex. It's those two fields that we have an agreement for them to use. And while our ordinance does not give us guidance on how to do sale or consumption at this complex, it does provide us very good guidance on how to do it in Festival Park. And so previous councils have adopted an ordinance that shows how we do sales down there. And we approached our legal team, and using the Festival Park as the guidelines, we wrote an agreement, I say we, the legal team, I didn't have anything to do with it besides review it, wrote the agreement that defines there has to be a boundary. And so the boundary is the purple and the red combined, there's a little zoomed-in area. And then the location of the fencing is for the sale and consumption area. So we have to have a defined area for the overall complex, and so that's where you have the purple and the red. And then the sale and consumption is within the red area with the black asterix being the sale point. So that's where they are planning on having their concession stand located. The agreement also talks about T, following all TABC regulations. That's kind of a standard, whether our lea-, whether our lawyer says they have to or not, TABC says you shall. But it's going ahead and it's defined in here, so the public or council would know this is what's being expected. Things such as alcoholic beverages may not be sold after the seventh inning or 10:00 PM. If we went to an Astros game tonight, we would see the same kind of thing. We wouldn't see it in writing, but that's one of their regulations. No more than two alcoholic beverages may be sold to one individual in a single transaction. And then no liquor sales will be permitted under this agreement. If you approve the agreement this evening, Mayor and Councilmembers, this would go back to, um, SFA's legal team for a third review. And that's why the agenda item is kind of worded a little odd, and it says for non-substantial changes after review by the city attorney. Because we were doing this on kind of, you know, we have a, a week's notice ahead of time, so SFA has reviewed it twice. But we wanted to make sure they had a chance to review it once again. They don't expect any changes. So if you were to approve it this evening, we would ask that you also authorize City Manager, Mr. Canizares, to execute that agreement. Mayor, I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone here that has a comment they would like to make about? Yes, Ms. Costello.
I think I'm spending my day coming up here. Uh, my only comment is, does the city receive any revenue from this? When the liquor and, and all of this is sold, will the city receive any revenue in return for this?
No.
So with this being said, um, all right, okay.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay. Uh, Councilmember Anderson, do you have any questions or comments?
Um, you answered the question that I had about, uh, sort of the, the permitted areas. Um, will the city or SFA be erecting any additional fencing, any sort of barriers to, to clarify those areas? Um, to, to make sure that those areas are, are very clear and are separated from, from other areas where there might be kids out there?
Yes, for one field, and no for another. And so, um, it would be SFA's responsibility, um, to erect the additional fencing. And since you, the owners of the property, are saying, tenant, you are allowed to do this, so then it's their responsibility to erect it. At the softball complex, they used existing fencing, and so it's, it's already defined.
That's there.
And then at baseball, um, I know it's kind of a small image, but i- if you can kind of look a little bit closer where there's a pavilion, there's not any fencing around that today. And so they're going to come up with a temporary fencing solution so that they can put it up. And then when youth baseball is in session, they pull it down. So it's not a permanent type fencing.
Okay.
So it'll be a combination of the two.
And I, I assume air marker, whomever will be contracted with the university in the future will be responsible for liability, um, along those lines. Okay, that's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Fisher?
Yeah, I just, I had the, the liability question and otherwise just glad to see that it seems, according to these boundary lines, that the baseball players will not be able to consume alcohol while playing, at least.
Yes, the dugouts are excluded for the consumption.
I saw that, yeah, in the very small picture, I saw that. Thank you.
Mr. Bolden?
No, I'm, I'm, I don't object to this. I'm okay with it.
Okay, thank you. Um, so the Chair will entertain a motion, uh, to approve, it would probably be easier to say approve item E as has written, if someone would like to make a motion.
You were right.
I'll make a motion to approve item E as written.
I'll second.
Okay, moved and seconded that we approve item E as written. Uh, if no further discussion, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And that motion passes. Thank you, Brian. Uh, item F, uh, ratify and approve a time and materials authorization, and we have Steve Bartlett, good evening.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. There's really small print on this, just.
Okay.
I am getting there. So tonight I have two items, much like Case did, uh, one is an item and one is a budget amendment. So we'll kind of, uh, tell you the whole story here at the first, and then we'll go into the budget amendment, if you will, so. Uh, basically, we're here requesting your consideration to ratify and approve what is a time and materials authorization for Sears Environmental. Uh, just a little background, as you know, in February, our ice and snow storm left tremendous amounts of brush across the city, and I'm sure you've heard from a lot of residents about that as we've worked to, to clear that. Uh, we initiate, initial volumes were estimated at 30,000 yards plus whatever leaf bagging information, so upwards of 40,000 cubic yards of material. And just to remind you, we have one brush crew, and we've actually been running two over the last year using our old, uh, brush truck as well, which we pulled together with duct tape and didn't sell because we've had so much brush volume. But this is significantly beyond what we could ever catch up with. And so we knew immediately that we needed some outside help. Sears Environmental Services was awarded a debris management contract back in 2019. It's got five renewable year periods. So basically, we have a contract with them already, and in that contract, it defines the process, the procedure, the labor cost, and unit prices for doing work. And when it comes time to call them in during a disaster like a hurricane or an ice storm, then we negotiate work authorizations to use particular parts. So it's kind of like an a la carte menu of things they could do. We've already got bid and agreed prices to do it for per yard or per hour or per piece of equipment. So we've, we've got through the procurement process, we just don't know what the scope is. And that's why this contract is in, is in force. The contract identifies, like I say, the unit prices that will be used in, in the event that we do this. Sears, uh, um, was contacted in March, uh, with a work order for additional brush assistance. They mobilized immediately and provided us six trucks with the knuckle boom trucks, and that's the one you see in this picture, that can reach out and get the brush. It's like our truck, only these have much bigger containers on them. So we had eight knuckle boom trucks going around the city at the same time. Sears also has mobilized a large tub grinder, which we typically bring in each year. We, all this debris goes to the landfill and piles up, and we grind it into a mulch material. So they've also assisted us by mobilizing in a tub grinder. So let me tell you kind of where we are today, so that you know. Uh, these crews have completed two complete routes around the city. And so we have gotten a vast majority of the brush picked up. Uh, we're still generating some brush, but we can tell by the work order calls that we get, uh, which are almost none now, that we've gotten a lot of folks' brush. So all the angry people have calmed down, and we appreciate that. Uh, the grinding began last week, or actually on March 29th, and, uh, will probably continue through this Friday. We hope by Friday, we'll have it all ground up. Uh, the trucks, uh, from the contractor crews all left this morning, so we're back to city vehicles now. And during this process, our two trucks went around just picking up bagged materials. So they're going to continue that effort this week. We've still got some bags to try to get up, and we think we'll be back to normal brush pickup starting next week, as long as we don't have another storm. So this work authorization was really issued, uh, as part of an emergency response under the disaster declaration that the mayor made. Uh, staff is now requesting that council, uh, consider to ratify and approve this work authorization in an amount not to exceed $300,000. So I will tell you, uh, as, as we speak, we're spending a little money because they're grinding brush right now. But we expect by the end of the week to be really more in the 250, 260, 270 range. So the 300 is probably our, our cap. And again, these are all time and materials charges, no lump sum. So Mayor, be happy to answer questions after public comment.
Thank you. Uh, is there anyone that has a comment they would like to make? Okay, Ms. Fisher?
To clarify, this is just, this is, um, approving work that's already been done, for the most part.
That is correct.
Okay, thank you. That's all I have.
Mr. Bolden?
Uh, no question, just, the, uh, tub grinders, is that city now, or is it Sears?
No, it's Sears.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Mr. Anderson?
No questions for me.
Okay. Um, I have one. What is being done with the ground product?
Well, at this point, we're not sure. So we're piling it up, making a pad out of it, and, uh, we're seeking creative uses for it. Uh, normally, you know, every year we grind brush. We have a $40,000 budget. Uh, we grind brush, and we spend all 40 doing that. We usually, part of the contract price is for them to remove virtually all of it. We keep a little bit, uh, Brian's using it in parks and some other areas. It's a little chunky, it's not like you would buy, uh, necessarily, you know, reprocessed, perfect. So it's got everything in it. So it doesn't have a lot of creative uses in landscaping at, in a residential level. So we're actually not sure what we're going to do with all of it. We may spread some of it around the surface of the landfill. We'd be delighted to give you a bag.
Okay, well, thank you very much. Uh, so, um, let's see, Chair will entertain a motion to approve item F, or not?
I'll move that we approve, um, agenda item F as written.
Second.
Okay, moved and seconded, we approve agenda item F as it is written. If no further discussion, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion passes. And item G, go right ahead.
Thank you, and thank you for that. So again, staff is requesting consideration by council to approve a budget amendment. This will come from the sanitation fund in an amount not to exceed $300,000, again, to pay for the cost associated with this outsourcing for both brush collection and grinding. There are adequate funds available to satisfy this request.
Okay, so is there any public comment on this item? Okay, hearing none. Uh, Councilmembers, Mr. Bolden?
No, no questions.
Question or comment? Mr. Anderson?
None.
Ms. Fisher?
None.
Okay, then Chair will entertain a motion.
Make a motion that we approve item G as written.
Second.
Okay, moved and seconded, we approve item G as it is written. Uh, if no further discussion, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Uh, thank you, Mr. Bartlett. That concludes our meeting for April 6th, 2021. Thank you all for attending. Thank you, Mr. Davis.